We're trying to turn it on. Just take it off. Okay. Mike's not gonna be here, so.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I called the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee to order and asked the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Patterson is excused. Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Vice President Harris?
Here.
President Melinda?
Here.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Patterson is a little under the weather, so I'm pinch hitting today and look forward to going through the legislative business. So I will go forward with the legislation this month. We do not have any presentations. So we'll start with introductory number 332, authorizing the sale of real estate. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
It's been moved. And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 333, authorizing a lease agreement for Clinton Section Police Station Office at the Upper Falls Shopping Center. Any questions, comments, concerns? Entertained a motion? It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 334, authorizing lease amendments for Bill Gray's Incorporated. Any questions, comments, concerns? It's been moved and seconded. I'll just comment that I'm excited to see them continue at the Port of Rochester. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 335, authorizing agreements related to sustainable home electrification. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Up, Councilmember Smith.
Yes, just want to make sure that I am clear on the numbers. So this is 125K at 25K per home, so this is about servicing five homes?
Yes, that is correct, Councilmember.
Okay. And so, five homes to be selected, and I'm wondering, between the two organizations, how many homes are eligible but will not get the service?
We can get you an answer in writing for that.
Great. And any documented criteria that you have on what makes a home eligible?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any additional questions? Entertained a motion? It's been moved? Seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 336, authorizing appropriations, loan agreement, and a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Gateway Apartments Affordable Housing Project. Any questions, comments, concerns? I have a quick comment. I'm excited to see the continuation of development in the area of, this is the other side of Main and Clinton, so this is Main and St. Paul, basically, and in the area of the Convention Center as well. So this project, for me, I think, is a good step towards continuing investment. In writing, I'd like to understand from the administration if there's other projects in the immediate area that are in the pipeline that we should be aware of. I know that there's been conversations on the old CGI building. I think we had that in a work session before. But just understanding what else is happening in the general area in writing would be helpful. Thank you. Any additional? Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. Yeah, this is a wonderful project. It's always good to see creative and adapted reuses of office buildings that are not otherwise at full occupancy. Just a question about the, what we're authorizing here. So a 40-year payment, sorry, a 40-year pilot agreement seems a little longer than usual. Aren't they typically 30 years? So can you just talk through, well, A, is that right? Is this an exceptionally long-term, and what's the reasoning for that?
The standard has typically been 30 years, as you mentioned. However, the state has started to require, prefer 40-year, so we have to match their terms.
Help me understand that again. So the state, the state offers a 40-year pilot themselves?
The affordability term is 40 years. Our, our terms have to match the state's terms.
Got it.
That's why we're going with 40 in this case.
So all of the agreements with state funding comes with a, with a 40-year term? So the thought is that our pilot should also come with a 40-year term?
That's correct.
And that's going to be the case for affordable housing projects, for pilot agreements moving forward, generally?
I believe it's still on a project-by-project basis, so I can't say that that'll be the case in every instance going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, so always excited to see more and more.
Being built, but always concerned with the limited number of family units assigned. In this one, there's only 14% two bedrooms, and I'm also wondering which of you, if I would apply to the two-bedroom rooms?
We'll provide a breakdown of the incomes related to the number of bedrooms in writing.
I'll entertain a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 337, authorizing the assumptions of a loan agreement and of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Monica Place Affordable Housing Project. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Smith, can we make sure the mic is working or try? We'll just take a moment.
I think I'm on.
There you are.
Okay. So this is for supportive rental communities, so I'm assuming that...
Yeah, this is, this is an existing property that YWCA is going to be acquiring and providing those services.
Okay. This is great. Can you just give to me, even if it is in writing, a list of criteria or eligibility for those trying to acquire one of those units?
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. So just, just making sure that I'm following exactly. So YWCA is purchasing this property from Pathstone. The only reason the city's involved at all is because we have an existing loan with them and a pilot agreement, and everything's being transferred over exactly as is, no fundamental change to our balance sheet whatsoever.
That's correct.
Okay. And they're planning to keep the properties functioning the same way they've been functioning?
Absolutely.
Great. Well, thank you to the YWCA for stepping in.
Entertained a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved? Seconded. All in favor, please say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 338, resolution authorizing an appointment to the Electrical Examiner, Examining Board. Any questions, comments, concerns? Entertained a motion? It's been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 339, authorizing the sale of real estate for developing owner-occupied, single-family, manufactured, and/or modular homes. On this one, we'll have a little bit of discussion. To my colleagues, I'll point you to Attachment A, which is a, looks like a PowerPoint from Cook's, Cook Properties, that has some renderings and floor plans of units. And then we also just received, while sitting here at the dais, another presentation entitled "New Neighborhood Development" that I think we should all have a moment to look through. But what I'd like to do first, because we did not have these attachments before the meeting, is just state that, and actually, in lieu of our chair not being here as well, that we are going to hold item with the intention of voting on it in committee, giving councilmembers a chance, excuse me, voting on this in the general council meeting at the end of the month, but give councilmembers a chance to review all the new material that we just received. But I do want to ask the administration maybe to give us a high-level overview of the project. And I see that we have someone representing Cook Properties here as well?
Yes, sir.
To talk about the project. So maybe NBD, if there's anything to say first, and then we'll, we'll ask some questions of the project.
Sure. Well, as you know, we prioritize the finding new ways to develop homes and bring the cost of construction down, and therefore, the cost to potential buyers down. We issued a request for proposals for manufactured and/or modular homes. I had identified seven sites capable of building nine homes on. Issued that RFP, received proposals ultimately going with the selection that is before you today of Cook Properties. And we're really excited about the partnership and to see the product that Cook provides on these, on these seven parcels.
Thank you. So I'll start by just saying, in my quick glimpse of the presentation here, the quality from, by appearances, looks amazing. I mean, these properties look like they're going to be a tremendous asset to the neighborhood that are, that are, we're being proposed, the lots that we're going to fill in. Could you maybe talk through, well, first introduce yourself, sir, and then maybe talk through your, your project and where you, where else you've also done this?
Sure. Yeah, my name is Jeffrey Cook. I'm the CEO of Cook Properties. We appreciate the time today. We are looking to install nine homes on the, on the seven sites, as Mr. Fish mentioned. We're going to do, as you can see in the pictures, very nice, quality-built, manufactured homes. The great thing about manufactured housing is that they are built in a factory. They're built on an assembly line with the same, with the same products that any other, any other home, be it site-built or, or built in a factory, are constructed. So our value really comes from the fact that we are built in a factory. So, yeah, we think it's a great product. We're, this is, we're doing something very similar in Geneva, the city of Geneva. But this, this will be, we're very excited to prove what we see as a very positive and very beneficial, attractive housing option, excuse me, housing option for, for residents of the city of Rochester.
Thank you. So in, in understanding manufactured homes in our climate and with the dynamics, could you maybe walk through, if there are any differences between a standard-built house and something that's manufactured in terms of, once it's onsite and set to the lot, as well as insulated, all those kind of things? What is the difference, if any?
Good question. There isn't any differences. They're built to the same specs that any other home would be built to. Same Energy Star ratings, same insulation. The only thing that we would do, well, we would do here versus other parts of the country, given our snow, which is coming up soon, is our roof load, our roof load specifications would match what's required here in upstate New York.
And then in terms of once onsite, is there a foundation? Is there a basement? Is this on top of a slab? What does that look like?
So these will be going on slabs and/or piers.
And then my, my final question for now, and then we'll, we'll go down the line. So in terms of timeframe, once council takes action, whichever direction we go, you get permission to move forward. What is the general timeframe on standing up a unit on a vacant lot in the city?
Sure. So let's say, assume we start October 1st, we would be ready to go with our site work in, we call it 60 or so days. Our plan is to have homes are ready to go our first quarter of '26.
Great. Thank you. I'll go, Councilmember Gruber, and then we'll go down the line.
No questions.
Thank you.
Vice President Harris?
I want to say kudos for bringing this to our city. And if you could just explain a little bit about how, how was it, was there new legislation that allowed you guys to build in a slab here in New York? I thought at one point that you couldn't do that without a basement. Could you talk to, speak to that?
Sure. So we can put our homes on a basement. We generally leave that up to, up to the homeowner, because it is a significant cost, increased cost to the, the end cost of the home. But the, so all the homes themselves are governed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They're HUD, they're HUD standards for the home. However, the foundation is dictated by the local, the local building code. In New York State, we can, we can put them either on a slab or on the footers, as long as they're frost-free.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That clarified.
There may be any shifting.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and good job. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. So thank you for finding such creative ways to house our folks. Really appreciate this. So from what I know of manufactured homes, folks pay for the property. So there's a mortgage and then some type of lot fee. So would there be a mortgage, a lot fee, and property tax? How would that work?
Another good question. So a lot of our communities are the way you just described, where they're land-lease communities. We own the land. The resident pays us a lot rent. In this situation, the resident and homebuyer is going to own the lot and the land. So it'll be, we'll just sell the home and the lot together, and then we're just like any other traditional fee, fee simple home. The resident, of course, will get, either get a mortgage or pay, pay cash for the home and the lot.
Because they're paying for both, does that mean there's a slight increase in the total cost?
I mean, unlike a land-lease community where we're expecting to receive rent over, you know, indefinitely in a period of time, we're selling both the lot and the land together. We're hoping to make a profit on these nine, a very small profit. But if we don't on these, on these nine, that's okay, because again, we're looking, we're going to be learning a little bit ourselves. But again, it's a, it's a proof of concept. But in the end, once we get going, we do need to make our profit at the point of sale. So there's no, I mean, the home, the home is what the home is. Again, we just sell them, we sell them both, both together.
Can I just ask about profit? Like, what is your expectation around that?
So we're, yeah, we're expecting, we'd be happy to make, if we made $10,000 on a home, that would be great, which would be, you know, far, far less than a traditional home builder. The home builders, I generally call it 20% of the net sale price is profit. So we would be, we'd be quite, we'd be high single digits if we're, if we're lucky. But again, I, we're not, we're just hoping not to lose money on these nine.
But it's not the priority?
Profit is not a priority. Our priority on this one is to, is to prove our concept, to prove the, prove the demand, and really to learn, so we can, we can do better in the future.
Thank you. This is great.
Yes. One, one final question, and I'm not sure that we have a sense of which sites are going to go into which lots. But in the transmittal, most of the model homes that are being discussed were about 1,300 square feet. One, a couple of them are 1,100 square feet. Could you talk through what the likely price range is for those types of models at 1,100 or 1,300 square feet?
Yeah, we're going to be in the $140,000 to $150,000 range.
Okay. Great.
And that's, that includes the lot and the home.
Understood. All right. Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you. We are going to hold this item in committee at the request of the chair, actually, and then we will take this up potentially in the council meeting on September 24th. Thank you. All right. Introductory number 340, amending the zoning map to designate Cobbs Hill Park and the Washington Grove part thereof as the Cobbs Hill Park Preservation District. A public hearing will be held on this item on September 18th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks. So my understanding about this, this legislation is that there was neighbors, I think some of whom are here tonight, who had initially proposed this, and now this is something that, over time, the administration has participated in the, in the, the evolution of the map, et cetera. Can I just get some kind of a comment from the administration as to what is, from your vantage point, the, the purpose and the reason for doing this at this point?
Thank you, Councilmember. We are moving in this direction, as you pointed out, because it is something that has come up over time from the folks in that general area. There is already a tremendous amount of historic benefit for the area, including the Washington Grove, including the actual park itself. So as you see in the map that was provided, it's really the park area itself that will be part of the preservation district. Other parts of this, for example, where the housing is currently, would not be part of the preservation district.
So just a couple of questions about that. So within the, the map that I'm looking at here, there's, there's the reservoir, which, you know, I know, I, I know that, I'm sure Commissioner O'Connaughton has a lot to say about all the things happening in the world of LT2, L2T. Almost had it. Yeah. So like, I'm curious how that, how the preservation district could influence decisions made there. Obviously, there's the new, there's the current Cobbs Hill Village affordable housing units, which are not yet fully realized. And I'm wondering how, how that will impact it. There's our lodge right there. I can't picture, I can't figure out exactly where it is on the map, but our, our lodge building, I believe at some point we had talked about trying to spruce up a little bit.
It, it shows up as a little square just adjacent to Lake Riley on the map.
So do any of these projects that I just mentioned, all of which will have some work done on them in the next several years, will any of those be harmed by this designation?
So, no, they will not. Reservoir is actually in the southern portion of the district, and that's just already a landmark, doesn't, has a landmark designation, so that would not be impacted at all.
So if, if the LT2 study came back and said that there had to be a covering put on there, that's not, there's no impact to that decision-making process and this preservation district?
Correct.
And I'm curious about the Cobbs Hill Village apartments and what they've already gone through in terms of site plan review, and if this will have any impact there?
Tom, do you know that? Yeah, I can.
Yeah, so I can, I'll speak in the material with my DES colleague, Tom Kiesior. The process is being carried out through the Bureau of Zoning and Permitting, because we shepherd these processes. My colleague to my left, your right, Tom Kiesior in DES, has been working with the neighbors, some of whom are here that you mentioned. To the Commissioner's point, yeah, the Cobbs Hill reservoir is already a landmark, so this is more or less including the remainder of it by, by way of a preservation district. The reason that distinction is important is the regulations by which you provide updates and improvements to parcels that are landmarks is different than it is preservation districts. So by involving DES to be able to work with them on capital improvement projects while also advancing the goals of what the neighbors want, that was the, the point of the collaborative effort. As it relates to the Cobbs Hill Village, which you've mentioned, Councilmember, no, there's no real impact on that project. That project is being fully realized now, being built out, and that parcel is not included.
Correct.
Not included in the preservation district designation.
Can you help me understand where, where on the map Cobbs Hill Village is? Because I would have thought it was, it would be, it would have been included, but, but I can't really tell.
It's right in the center of the map, so there's a private parcel in the center.
Oh, you mean the one that's, that's labeled Cobbs Hill Village?
Yes, exactly.
Got it.
And that's surrounded by parkland on all sides, but it is private property.
So the, the fact that it's, that there aren't the lines on there, it's just basically being carved out?
That's correct.
Okay. And how about the lodge? The, our lodge building, which I think, to Commissioner's point, is just that little speck south of Lake Riley and north of Norris Drive. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So if, does that, does, does this have any impact on any development we might do, that development, any rehab we might do of that building?
Yes, it would have an impact if we were doing significant changes to that building. So the advantage of the preservation district is larger projects that we were doing would go to the preservation board to get reviewed. But smaller repairs, kind of, you know, upkeep, in-kind replacement, those kind of things won't have to go to the board. So that was part of the switch to the district.
Okay. And this has been vetted with Commissioner Green and the folks from Drys?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. No further questions.
Any additional questions? Entertained a motion? It's been moved? Seconded. All in favor, please say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the business of the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee, and we now stand adjourned.
Did you know before, or you just, oh, jeez?
Aw, thank you so much.
So...
See, all of them...
Now, in order for you to be considered a committee member...
Sure.
And then we did let you...
And that's one of the...
Well, we got a little...
Right, it's my...
You made it.
Yeah, I can, just, just focus on the...
You know, first, we do have...
We can't, we can't even call it an order.
We can't change committees.
Oh, okay. So...
So we can't call it, we can't even call it an order.
Oh, really? Then what will we reschedule for?
No.
We can't call...
We can't call...
It's pretty good, at least.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
And what happens like that?
I don't know.
No.
Tom.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm not able to call the People, Parks, and Public Works Committee to order, and I'll explain. We have one excused absentee tonight, and we have two unexcused absences. That leaves us not able to call a quorum. So my apologies, we will have to reschedule. Please seek the clerk's office for an update. Thank you.